Thank you.
Thank you. We're live.
All right. Thank you all for coming for tonight's hearing for Wareham Sonic Board Appeal for tonight. Adjourned on, tonight is Wednesday, June 26, 2024. It is 6:30 PM and we are at the room 420 of the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and make a roll call. My far left, Mr. Troy Larson, Ms. Veronica Devenese, our clerk, Mr. Jim Akibachi. My far right, I mean, my far left, I wanna welcome a new member, associate member, Mr. Chris Conti. Thank you for coming. He used to be a regular member, so he's aware of the process. And our regular member, Mr. Richard Sample, and myself, the chair, Nazir Akalasi. We're gonna start with some quick business with the minutes of 6:12, 2024.
Motion to approve as presented with one exception on the second item. I hand-edited that Richard Sample abstained on that vote, just to have it on record.
Okay. Can you make sure Sonia, you fix that or Patty?
As long as it's...
Oh, okay.
If she wants to, she can.
Just in...
Yeah, I did. I did.
All right. So we got a motion to change with the, to grant, to approve the minutes with the changes, Jim did. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, we're gonna move forward with the continued public hearing, 39-23, Wareham Cranberry Highway LLC, 302O Cranberry Highway. All right, public hearing still open. You name counselor.
Attorney Jillian Morton, here for the applicant. Online, you should see, you do have our engineer online, Phil Henry. So I just wanna recap where we're at, what the project is. So this is the old De Angelos right on Cranberry Highway. Our, we got a denial letter from the commissioner, which said that we needed a variance for a 10-foot bump out for a drive-through. We met with you all and you said that, you know, you're preferably favorable to the drive-through as long as there is a site plan review. So on May 21st, we submitted our site plan review packet. It included our plans, which Phil can go through, as well as some pictures of what the site would look like, impact statement, and most recently, we just got back our peer review. So I'm not sure it's of value really to go into the specifics of that right now, because our engineers need to kinda get together offline. We just got it yesterday. But I'm happy to, kinda want the board's input on the plan to see what else they would like to see and what they like. So would you like an engineer to kinda go over what we've done?
Well, yeah, he can. There's a long list, 19 items he has to work out with, Mr. Phil.
Yeah, he just got it.
I understand.
And so I don't know how much value it's gonna be, but at least showing you what we have done and then we'd be able to see if there's more input from you. So when we're coming back with a plan, it has your input as well as Phil.
All right. He can. Sir, you name an address for the record?
Sure. My name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group, 21 High Street, North Andover, Massachusetts. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Excellent. I'll just give a brief overview of what we, of what we present, of what we submitted. And I, as you stated, we are in receipt of the initial review letter from Phil Cordero. I actually had a chance to speak to him this afternoon and we think these items are addressable. And so with that being said, what we submitted, and we're happy to answer any specifics as this, as this meeting evolves, but we wanted, we wanted to further develop the site property in conjunction with the existing conditions, if you will, of basically maintaining the limits of asphalt, the curbing, et cetera. But with that being said, we are committed, as submitted on the plans, we committing to resurfacing the asphalt and restriping. That was one of the items that the board wanted us to consider. We also took advantage of existing landscape areas, which are currently grassed, and mainly focused on Route 6. And we focused on including shrubs and ground cover and fescue grasses along Route 6. We've also, we're proposing to relocate one sight light and then add two additional sight lights to provide adequate sight lighting throughout the property. We, and then we also commissioned the jet vacuum or washing of the, of the existing drainage system, so we can get a better understanding of where, what goes where and what discharges. I am aware of a comment from Phil that I spoke to him about, about a particular outfall as it relates on to the Wesley side of the property, but I won't get into the comments unless you, unless the board has specific items that I'd like to address or at least initially discuss, but that's the general overview and I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
All right. Very well. Troy, what do you have a question?
I have no questions.
Veronica?
I have no questions at this time.
Jimmy?
No.
Chris?
No questions.
Richard?
No, nothing at this time.
All right. I have a bunch of questions. I don't have a problem personally, like grant you a variance for the, for the parking, but we definitely wanna fix the curbing. We have no architectural design for the building, for the elevations. The drainage has to be addressed, has to be tested, addressed and cleaned. Landscape is gotta go by what our engineer requires. And like I said, it's, snow storage has to be addressed. On traffic circulation, I'm okay with your, with your circulation. I'm okay with the impact you have. I don't have a problem with the circulation, but we need to see that emergency lane in case somebody wanna pull out a drive-through and take off. And other things, you gotta sit down, I mean, contact Mr. Cordero, Phil, and work out things.
Yep. Absolutely. Yeah. Yes, we agree with that.
All the specifics, all the specifics has to be addressed. We can only help you with an extra parking lot, a variance, a buffer variance, height variance, things like this, but we will not bend on any specifics, drainage, curbing, paving, all these things. We're not interested to bend on those.
Okay, yeah, I could perhaps address some of that. The, the curbing, we had, we made a note that the curbing was to remain and to be repaired as necessary, and Phil and I had talked about that. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna replace any curbing that needs replacing, as opposed to just repairing it. We think that's the more appropriate action there. Keeping in mind that, for the most part, this will be a mill and overlay or just a resurfacing of the pavement, so the curb reveal is proposed to remain intact. So any curbing that is adequate, we will be proposing to keep, but we will be replacing in kind all, all curbing. As it relates to the drainage, I think the biggest step that we, that we could have taken, we did take, and that is we, we cleaned all the rims, all the catch basins and the piping as best as we could. When we got to the site, all the rims were packed with silt to the, to the rim. So there is, there is drainage infrastructure there. I understand that there are some comments related to, to the drainage, but I think we can put together a summary to the satisfaction of Phil, hopefully, indicating that we think that the catch basins that are currently there and the connecting pipes are of adequate size, but we'll provide some additional stormwater calculations as well.
Right. But if, cleaning the catch basin doesn't mean it complies, it probably filled with silt. So it's gotta be tested. So it's gotta be, have like a perk test. It's gotta be, the engineer, it has to be witnessed by a certified engineer and tested. It could, all we know, it probably, you cleaned it, yeah, okay, but it probably fills up with water quick if it doesn't drain properly. This drainage is probably 50, 60 years old.
I, I'll defer to, if Phil Cordero is there, perhaps I'll defer to him, but it's our understanding that this is a closed system, so there's no, there's no perk testing or test pits that are required.
It can be inspected. It can be inspected, even if it's closed. It can be inspected. There's a way to inspect it. There's a way to be inspected, even if it's closed, it can be inspected. Another thing on the curbing, it'll be identified which one needs to be repaired by our town consultant and you're gonna have to change what's, what we identify. Also, there's a lot of them dipping. I drove by the site, it's gotta be picked up. So the site has to be, has to comply 100%, and like I said, the board willing to give you, work with you with the variance and things like that you need. Okay?
Yeah, that sounds, yeah, that sounds fair. We could identify areas of curb replacement at a, at a pre-construction meeting. We're happy to take that as a condition of approval, obviously.
Okay. Is this it?
That's, that's the, you know, that's the building with, you know...
All right. When, so will you be ready for next hearing? Will you be ready for next, next time on July 10th to come back?
We got a response from the town engineer, I believe, the town...
Well, I read it. It's too, it's too many items and, and we just got it today. Before we go forward, anybody on the public wants to speak in favor against this matter? We hear nothing. Okay. Is July 10th enough time to work out these things with the town engineer and come up with things, with answers?
Well, I guess, Jillian, do we, is there any harm in going forward with July 10th with the understanding that if we, if we cannot get a clean letter by then, we can continue? Is that, is that the best action?
I'm actually not around the next meeting, so I prefer July 10th.
July 10th?
Yeah.
That's the next meeting?
That's what I prefer. I'm not around the next meeting.
Okay. I mean, as long as you agree to address the issue, our consulting says you're in good shape. You know what I'm saying?
We just, yeah, we have to get together with him, totally understanding, but is there anything else as far as the board, when it's...
Good what?
It's okay. Is there anything else with the board, though, that they wanna see? You know, we gave a rendering. I know that Cranberry Highway is, you know, we've done several projects over there, there's certain looks that you like, so we just want that input as well.
I do like the rendering myself. Apparently the shingles has to be changed, you gotta do the painting, the, I mean, as long as you come up with this, whatever the camera is, with this rendering, you're looking good. Do you know what I'm saying? I don't know, rest of the board, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, it looks nice.
I mean, it cleans it up. Hopefully it's good for the next 40, 50 years.
Makes me thirsty.
Yeah.
Well, the owner...
Okay, so...
All right. So let's, let's move forward. So you wanna?
July 10th, please.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Motion to move, to continue through July 10, to, until July 10th.
Motion by Jim to continue 39-23 till July 10th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It carries.
Do we need the deadline also extended?
Do we need to move the deadline?
I'm just, I don't have it right, just in case.
I don't know.
Hold on one second. What's the address? Wareham LLC, July 31st, your deadline.
Okay.
The time for...
So we got it. You come in July 10th.
Okay.
If we need to extend the...
We'll do it then.
Decision of the board, yeah.
Sure.
I mean, you guys work things out and come up with a clean plan, we'll, we'll be ready to move on July 10th.
Great.
There's no sense, keep pushing it. All right. Move to 5-24, Walid Al-Daya, special permit, site plan review on 2544 and 2546 Cranberry Highway.
That's me, Attorney Jillian Morton. Should have in front of you a continuance...
A continuance.
Letter?
Yeah.
Sent over a couple days ago, actually.
Sir, who you here with?
He's here with me, but...
For this matter?
For some, no.
Okay, yeah.
As we continue.
To be honest with you, I'm not willing to continue myself, because I think these people been ignoring us and they haven't done any work. That's my opinion. I'm, I'm against giving a continuance. I'm moving to, I'm willing, I'm tending to move forward to deny without prejudice and uphold the building commissioner decision. You gotta convince three members not to, so I'll start by Troy.
Is this the old...
The old NAPA, Mark Soro. Troy, what do you think?
I'm inclined to agree with you.
Veronica?
I'm, I need to be reminded what exactly is happening.
This is, I'm next to the water department.
Yeah.
It was NAPA for a while, then it became...
Computer play.
Somebody's towing, Mark's towing. While it was Mark's towing, it was used as an automotive repair and never permitted to be such. And these people bought it and found out that they were operating without a permit. They'd been so notified and they've been given time and times to complete a proper application and site plan review.
And weren't they allowed to, like, now I remember. They were allowed to operate in a limited capacity, but...
For inspections.
Inspection only, and they still haven't did the oil trap.
So...
And they don't repair outside, the scars, parts, oil everywhere. I went by... Jimmy?
Veronica, did you have...
Yes, thank you. That was it. I don't have a comment.
You got it? Okay, so I'm hearing my fellow members, I'm hearing what's going on. I, I would be willing to give a continuance, however, it will be a drop-dead continuance that if they don't have a complete site plan review, blah, 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 everything that we've asked of them to do long ago, that, is July 10th the next meeting?
Yeah.
At the July 10th meeting, at that point, we should deny with prejudice. I'd continue if they'll accept to deny with prejudice if they're not ready by July 10th. I'd like to, you know...
I also agree with Jim on that.
Chris, what do you think?
I don't have any comment on this one.
I'd love to give my argument now, to say what I think about the situation.
She'd like, she'd like to comment on my comment.
Go ahead.
On all of them, to be honest.
Go ahead.
So as far as looking from a liability point of view for the town, this was a situation where something was granted, clearly it was not done properly. And I think that the deference, there should be, you know, it takes a lot to get this up to par. And I think, number one, denying without prejudice is, is not necessarily the best route to go, 'cause it's, as far as being appealable, it's pretty, you know, it's pretty high threshold and usually the courts will not like without prejudice unless there's gross negligence and malpractice. So I personally think that if you allow me to continue to, to July 10th, and I'm gonna have everything I, you know, for you, that hopefully we can present to you, but I just think that, I understand where you're coming from, that it's been quite some time, but there's a lot of other things in the back history of this case that could put the town in a spot that they, you know, don't wanna be in.
I do agree that denying with prejudice, prejudice is hard. However, we very hard to intimidate when you tell us it's liability in court. We don't get intimidated easy. None of us get intimidated.
It's a town aware him with case for that.
No, 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 we don't get intimidated easy. This guy is violating left and right.
I'm missing, I'm missing, between you and her, I'm, I'm hearing two different things. I think that you're saying denying without prejudice would be a mistake tonight?
I'm requesting a continuance until July 10th. In the letter I showed you, they are making some improvements, trying to put the traps in and handle that piece, which is a huge expense. You know how expensive that is? So trying to...
But how about the study for the site plan? Have they did anything?
I haven't talked to Mr. Madden and, and I'm told it's going to be ready July 10th. So as far as the expenses, the thing you can imagine, someone bought a business and has, and I know it's not your fault, but millions invested in this, and it was fraudulently, it wasn't properly done. So that's not your, you know, the town, or that's a separate matter in civil court. But as far as looking at it as a whole, I agree, you know, the commissioner should make sure they're doing what they need and, and if they're doing things, again, I haven't been there, but they shouldn't be, he has, you know, the right to make enforcements. But as far as where we're at with the town, I think it would be harsh and arbitrary.
I, I do agree that denying with prejudice is harsh. I won't go for that, but I will, I stand. We pull a vote, see what happens. Anyone in the audience, in the public, wanna speak in favor against this matter?
We still have further comment.
I hear none. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
So I read the, it was either, somehow via email, I got the request for an extension. And in the body text of that request for an extension, there was a comment about ongoing work to get done, and I heard you reference something just now. So this is where I'm a little, I believe what the board's looking for is a plan of what's to be done. I don't believe the board's asking him to show up and say it's all done.
Right.
So am I, am I missing something here? We were looking for a, a plan from...
He's supposed to come up with a full site plan review and, and he haven't started this.
But that doesn't mean he has to put grease traps and stuff in prior to coming to us with a site plan review. It means he has to come with a plan on what he's going to do.
We allowed him to use his sticker license.
Yep.
It was the, but it was under the plumbing inspector's sole discretion if he requires a grease trap. I went by there, I don't see grease trap. I don't know if he ever even went to apply for the sticker license, but that's fine. If he doesn't wanna, don't wanna. That's perfectly fine. But I, I don't appreciate it. He hasn't done anything on the site plan review. Nothing. They just came, asked us to put a bunch of dealer licenses, a bunch of cars, put parking here and there, and that was the end of it. And that's been a while. That's not a smart businessman.
So again...
I don't call it smart business or, I mean, whatever.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, this is someone who came into this town, invested in this town, and clearly through errors and prior building commissioner who let this go through, there was operating and there's still a person operating under that.
Building, prior building commissioner, that he had, he had a business certificate, not a commissioner's signature. He just had a...
Change of use on, on this actual file. There's a lot of back history. I just think for two weeks...
You could change the use, but you have to comply with the site, with the site.
Yeah, hence why we're trying to get the grease trap and the drainage and all that, so...
Whatever the board wants. What's the wishes? Anybody throws, throw a motion there?
I'm still thinking that there's somewhere, there's a loss between the parties, because I still believe the board is looking for a drawn plan, not an as-built.
Of course, full site plan.
And you're, and I believe the applicant's trying to offer us to come in with an as-built.
No, so I can clarify that, 'cause I did talk to Mr. Madden. So he will be doing the full set. We did an as-built, that's what we initially did, and showed you kinda the existing conditions. So as far as where we're at now with the case.
And you think he'll be ready on the 10th, Mr. Madden? I know they're very busy.
I can't make a promise to the, you know, in...
Well, I hate to see you come here on the 10th, if the board gives you the extension and then the board really not happy.
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
If this is in Mr. Madden's lap, it's obviously, it sounds like it's being worked on, is out of the applicant's hand.
It just put in Mr. Madden's hand, unfortunately.
I'll respond to that, just as far as for the clarification for the board. A decision to deny needs to be based upon, can't just be based upon this is taking a long time. We've seen that turned, and I know you don't care about the court piece of it, but it needs to be in regards to this plan.
Yeah, but we can't drag a hearing forever. We can't be dragging a hearing with no evidence, with no plans.
We had plenty of hearings, lasted over three years, Mannix, you know, there are other hearings, so...
Yeah, but those people were working on it. They're coming up with plans, they're coming up with idea, they're coming up with changes. This guy's ignoring us.
Your whole livelihood is gone. How are you supposed to pay for things? Okay, so I preferably think that you should give him break.
He's been coming since February, right? We started this in February? Is that right?
Yeah, so the peer review of the initial comments and then we came, I don't know the exact date that we, you guys agreed to have the sticker, which was, thank you, that was great, but, you know, out for, he got the denial letter and I think he's been out, it was actually on Christmas, like the week of Christmas, he got a cease and desist to stop his business. So, you know, as far as we're six months in, seven months in, that sounds like a lot of time, but you have plenty of cases that are in front of you, well longer than that.
Well, I feel like, I feel like because the ball is rolling at this point, Mr. Madden is obviously a participant at this point, that I would be okay with doing an extension to July 10th.
All right. Troy, you would be okay with that?
I would be okay with that.
Jimmy? Rich?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So we're moving for an extension of time until July 10th.
Okay, do I have, we have a motion to extend 5-24, 2544 and 2546 Cranberry Highway till July 10th. Do I have a second? That's by Jim. Second by Rich. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
I, I, but I'd like to condition that the counselor bring back to her client the importance of somebody...
Last draw.
In addition to you. No, no, you know, either Madden or the applicant, somebody come here with a damn good story or a damn good plan.
So...
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, denied. Four, one, zero. So it carries. Thank you.
Four...
All right. 6-24, TTR LLC, 300 Road. 6-24, 300 Road. Where is 300 Road?
They continued or no?
Oh, do we have a...
They requested a continuance, oh, so...
Have they highlighted? No.
Yeah. Number three, yep. They, they sent in a request for a continuance as well. I think somehow we have to...
All right. We could discuss the matter, though, even if they're not here.
Correct.
On 300 Road, I read that our consulting, Mr. Cordero's narratives, and apparently the applicant wants a waiver on everything. I personally am not interested in giving a waiver for everything. I can only let go the, the impact studies, which is the, whatever, there's an impact study, this I would allow to go without, but all the other stuff, I'm not interested personally. I don't know if you guys read the letter, but this is where I, where I stand.
I didn't get a chance to read all that.
I do believe that there's some things that could be done, but I'm being chosen not to, so...
Exactly. You're exactly right. That's how it sounds. There's a lot of things could be done. We're willing to work with the applicant, but definitely we're not gonna, personally, I'm not gonna agree with all these waivers. Any comment? Chris?
This is the...
The 300, it used to be J and R.
Okay. No, no comment. They, they need to extend, if they're gonna get it extended, it goes till, what, June 30th, so...
What's the deadline on that one?
Deadline June 30th, I think. Deadline June 30th, I think.
The deadline, June 30?
So if we don't grant them an extension tonight, their application's expired, and they'll have to reapply all over again.
Right, and they need to be here to give an extension.
And we, is this being heard as a answer to a notice of violation, or is this a...
No, no, this is a site plan review. They're here for a site plan review.
Yeah, but my recollection is this was...
It was a cease and desist, and they agreed to come with a site plan review.
This is the man that came in front of us and said, "I'm a contractor."
Right.
And then we said to him, "Well, if you're a contractor, how come you don't know how to apply for any of this?" And he said, "Well, because I work for other contractors, I'm really a subcontractor." And then he came back another time and said, "I just don't understand the process." And so now we've gotten to the point where at the, where the end of, I mean, and he's not even here, I mean, another, I believe that this is an instance where, you know, you give an inch and people want a yardstick.
Right, right.
When he came here, he was denied the ability to use the property that he purchased. We tried to work with him and allow him to use the site. So now he's in business, and we can go pound you-know-what right up our you-know-what. So I think the thing to do is let it expire and let him bear the cost of a new application and start all over again, and then maybe he'll know that we're not to be trifled with.
Well, either way, he's not here to give us an extension. This is the smart thing to do, and it's the right thing to do. We can't, because they'll expire, it'll be constructively granted. We're allowed to go, it's constructively granted. Anybody online on the, for that matter?
It's not a constructive grant. If he's not here, we can make a decision right now.
Right, but if we don't, it'll be constructive.
Yeah, so we have to deny him. We have no choice.
All right, anybody on the public for this matter? I hear none. Any discussion with the board? Okay, let's move to close this matter.
So moved.
I have a motion to close this portion of this public hearing on 6-24, TTR LLC, Trito Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself now say aye. Can we get a motion?
That was seconded by Troy.
Seconded by Troy. Did I say that?
Said Richard, but that's...
I'm sorry.
We said it at the same time.
Seconded by Troy.
I didn't even hear you.
All right, what's the, what's the motion? How are you denying without prejudice?
Yeah, motion to deny without prejudice.
We have a motion to deny 6-24, TTR LLC, without prejudice for Trito Road by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica for denying without prejudice. Does mean he could reapply. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And the finding on that matter, that no one's here to give us an extension, and the deadline is 6/30/2024. So these are the findings.
How does that impact for further discussion? How does that impact the fact that we allowed him to go ahead and operate on a temporary basis until he brought these...
He's in violation again.
So he's, now he's back in violation.
Back in violation.
Expect the commissioner can go down and tell him to work out of his house.
Start again. Okay, 10-24, Joseph Sergi, appeal on Two Sarabath.
Been right in. Is this all new?
Yeah.
All right, public hearing's still open.
Attorney Jillian Morton here for the applicant, Joseph Sergi. So what I'm passing around, which I know you don't want new information, it's mainly pictures, okay? So where we left off, if you recall, Mr. Sergi had violation letters that he is running his business in a zone that doesn't allow for this type of business. And how we ended the last hearing was the termination, that the building commissioner said it's a general contractor's yard, and I asked you all, do you agree with that? Do you not? And it was the termination of the board that it is a general contractor's yard, in your opinion. So what I wanted to do was, I'm still gonna contest that and get that on record, that I don't believe this is a general contractor's yard, but I also am going to argue the use variance to allow for it. And in that way, it gives the board a control. If they do approve the use variance, they can put conditions on it that hopefully maybe make everyone happy and the neighbors happy. So I just want to start with why I don't think it's a general contractor's yard. So...
Sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, great. So this situation is a little unique, because he actually had this business since 2007, over 17 years in town. We've gone through the fact that the town clerk, he handed out business certificates like candy, okay? But we're in a situation now that this is his primary residence, and he doesn't hold a general GC license. He doesn't hold a home improvement contractor license. He does not have salt, loam, external materials outside that he uses for any of his business. So, you know, we're going into what's the definition of a general contractor's yard. In my opinion, if you go around town and figure out how many people have GC licenses that are for their house, I mean, building commissioner would be busy 24/7, more than he already is. So that's, just so I want to get on record, that I don't believe the determination's correct. But if we're gonna go with that, let's talk about why I do believe that Mr. Sergi should be allowed to keep operating his small landscape business out of his residence. So when we're looking at the variance and the use variance, it's a little different than when we're doing just the regular variance, but let's look at the site. The site is at the, a dead end, the end of the road, as far as there's...
If I may, counsel, no disrespect, but you just contradicted yourself. You just said he's not running a business, but you want to argue a variance for his small business. So you admit that he's running a business.
I didn't say he wasn't running a business. I said it's not a general...
You just said for he's small, yeah, but you said for...
I said it's not a general contractor yard, and I will assess, I will say that over and over. Yes, he has his business there.
All right, so you want to argue, argue a variance?
Yeah.
All right, let's hear it.
Great, so back to the site. So the site is, if you recall, go down the end of Glenn Charlie Road. This was actually the first of built in this area. He has several abutters, which I know one of the abutters is in opposition. Actually, across the way, if, and I don't know if you're familiar with this, but there's also kind of a special needs house that's across the way. I think it's called Seven Hills Community. So there's buses that will come and pick up the adult, special needs people. And also, there's Sarabath Lane was created, bigger houses. I know that, and I don't know if he's online, Mr. John Pena, who's a part of the, kind of the association over there, there's not been any problems, Mr. Sergi. There is, in my opinion, and I don't want to dive too much into it, but as far as a neighborly dispute, you know, that's something that should be handled in a different form. I'm gonna argue that this man should be able to have his livelihood and have his, his truck, his, so he has the bigger truck, which he uses for plowing, the town aware him. He has his personal truck. His son also works for him. And he has a mower that he uses for his residence. So, you know, as far as the detriment to someone, there's not all this traffic that's, that's being, you know, shown to you guys. The pictures that were, that were in front of his yard with the trucks, that was, of course, for Facebook. That was on his front lawn. If you drive by there now, if you look at the pictures at the end, it's a nice, beautiful yard in the front. So we do believe that this site is unique. At the end of the road, really funky shape, if you look at it, has frontage, and then again in the back, a butts a lot of vacant land. There's an extreme hardship if you deny this. So if you deny this, he's gonna suffer financial harm, and also be treated differently than, I would say, quite a bit of residents very, on that road itself. Look right next to his property, there's a gentleman who has tons of boats and everything. So I think it's, it's sort of unfair to kind of make him the one who has to pay for, you know, perhaps a disagreement between neighbors. Our desired relief, the standard within the bylaw, is not, does it upset one neighbor? It's actually, it's a substantial detriment to public good in general. So that's the standard that you go by. You're not just going by one person who's nearby, you're going by the whole neighborhood. So I just want you to keep that in mind, and the fact that no other person's been complaining about this, even the, the people across the way who have the special needs of the house, there's no complaints there, and they're in and out, taking the people to different places. And I do believe that the intent of the bylaw was not to restrict tradesmen, painters, carpenters, to have their commercial vehicle on their site. And maybe they do have some equipment there. There's plenty of people in Wareham that that's the case. All that being said, you're able to regulate this within a variance. You could say it is only for him. If he sells the property, the variance goes away. So there's conditions that we're willing to make, a limited amount of vehicles, hours of operation, no employees, no customers there. Those are all happening anyways. If you want that on the variance, we're happy to put that in there to protect and keep, you know, the integrity. And it could say, if he sells the property, it goes away. What I have?
All right, Troy?
I have no questions.
Veronica?
You know, I commented on this last time. My feeling really hasn't changed a whole lot. He's in a residential area at the very end of a long residential street with big equipment, you know, going up and down the, the road. He is tucked away so that you really can't see a whole lot of it, because you've got the, the state park behind it.
Yeah.
But, I don't know. I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Jimmy?
I'm always reluctant to stop a person from using the property they own. I sent a little cartoon around everybody that showed a picture of a guy going to the town, asking permission to use his own property. And I think that there's a lot to be said for that. However, I think there's a lot to be said for treating your neighbors well. I think it's, I've been convinced that Mr. Sergi has had conflicts with neighbors, and I think, kind of like the Hatfields and the Mattoys, when you start fighting with your neighbors, you do stupid things that you kind of regret you did. Or maybe you're happy that you did them, because you're a vengeful, spiteful person. I don't know. But I know that type of behavior, in my mind, has gone on. I've been convinced of it. I'd be much more inclined to, to grant relief to this applicant if we continued, and I saw some significant evidence of an attempt to screen this operation, and it is an operation, from neighbors' view. The man's in the business where he could erect fences, he could plant abavati, he could create a visual screen that would make it near impossible to know what's going on in the backyard. The yard is big enough. So if, or up to me, and I'm not king of the world, so it's not up to me, but if it were up to me, I would continue, and I would hope during the next two weeks, that something significant happened on that property, begin to convince my fellow board members that this man wants to be a good neighbor.
Richard?
I seem to be wanting to echo Jim tonight, so what he said was well spoken, so I agree.
Chris, you have a comment?
I agree with Jim, but I would, I would like to hear public comment, too.
All right, anyone?
I do have one other thing. Knowing this area, where he has large equipment there, isn't that a water protection area?
It is, R130.
So...
Zone 2. That's why it's R130, because it's a zone 2.
Yeah. So I think that, considering, that should be a consideration, you know, for a variance to allow that to happen, but...
If he's storing fertilizers and stuff like this, it becomes a big problem. All right, we go to the public. Anyone here in favor of this matter? Anyone against? Come forward, please, state your name and address. Name and address for the record.
My name's Ted Nagel, 309 Charge Pond Road. Two Sarabath is my backyard, basically. I have just something written down here. Joe knew when he moved into this area that he was moving in to a residential area. This is why I bought down there, because it's a residential. I expect certain things out of a residential area. You move into a commercial area, okay, fine, but I choose to live in a residential area, you know, and what it, but at any rate, Joe built this building, a 30 by 60 built, by the way, it's on an acre of land. This is not a little mum and pop business. This is an acre of land, and he built it without a permit. He knows the value of a permit. I can't understand why he would do something like this, you know, I mean...
I think the bond has a permit. Does it have a permit?
No, sir.
Sorry, I guess you're right.
Well, you know, I don't know, they just, you know, he has it on over an acre of land. He has multiple storage containers. Those aren't permitted. This is just the growth of his business, bigger and bigger. He has all these vehicles, all kinds of different noises. You know, first thing in the morning, boards being thrown, his skid steer being started up, tailgates slamming down, various different noises that would, you know, come from a business, you know? I don't expect this. This is a residential area. As far as not producing anything, he probably has about 10 cords of wood down there. We're listening to that being cut up and split. This is just, some of the noises, I can't tell you all the different things we hear from back there. My question is, has anyone actually gone down there and looked at this property? I think they're gonna find it's a little bit more than a little mum and pop business. You know, it's just, back in 2011, Joe was called into the Board of Selectment and told to get his equipment off the property. These people realize, oh, how do I say, he, these people realized why the building permits were issued, and Joe is not following any of this. He's basically in defiance of this. Okay, before the houses were built, my wife and I, we went down, we followed this. This is our backyard, and so we, you know, how things were going. First of all, they were gonna put 28 houses in there. The town said, "Absolutely not, you're not gonna do this." So it, the builder complied. He changed it around. One house, single-family home on three acres of land with a, an HOA that's gonna protect the land. We sat through and listened to this, and we all said, "Well, jeez, if the land's gonna be protected, it's a single-family home, what's wrong with that?" Well, Joe has not followed any of this. He's commercialized the area. I don't want to get into how much has gone on. You know, we're talking about Joe. Well, what about our lives? You know? You know, I don't, I just don't know how to, you know, he does what he wants to do, and it's all about Joe. What about us? There's three in our house, and we don't like listening to this. He's done a lot of other things in the past that, oh. I'm not against Joe growing his business, but not in my backyard, you know? This is a residential area. This is why I moved here. Don't I have any rights?
Of course you don't.
You know, my wife has a few things to say.
Just your name, ma'am, for the record.
Charlie Nagel, 309 Charge Pond Road, and I do have...
Thank you.
All right, what I will say is, the reason why we're the only ones here versus when we first came to the very first meeting, it was continued. I had four neighbors here, and then they don't want to get involved. They're afraid, okay? So are we? We're afraid, too. Secondly, I want to clarify a few statements that were made at last meeting. The last picture I sent, last meeting, there was a picture there of his truck. My only point of showing those trucks, he doesn't keep them on his front lawn. He was just showing them for his Facebook profile. But I'm just showing you what he has, okay? Now, Joe stated that the picture of the trucks on his lawn was from 219. This is incorrect. The picture is from December of 2022. The caption reads, "New trucks, new machines, new plows, pusher, and two sanders." Now, I have seen, because I'm retired, you know, I've been working 49 years. I deserve, we deserve a little piece, you know? But I have seen flatbed, flat, I was sitting out on my deck one morning, having coffee, and I saw a big flatbed come in. It looked like cement blocks and a dump truck full of, of stuff. I don't know what it was inside there, but I did see some sort of blocks. Another statement was made from Mr. Sergi, that he only has one guy from the cave we're at working with, with him. His crew, from what I'm seeing, his, his crew varies depending on the job. If you look at one of the pictures, you will see there are three men installing cobblestone aprons. He runs ads on his profile to hire people for part-time and full-time, okay? The last meeting, I was trying to make a... The last meeting, I was trying to make a point. Attorney Morton made a statement that there are a lot of people that have chickens. A lot of people do, but this is, this is, this is true, but not a farm. Joe was given a stable permit and made it into a farm, and we had to listen to horses, goats, roosters crowing at all hours, 4:30 in the morning, and put, in fact, he put the goats on our side. So we were facing his goats, and that's all they did was bar all day long, the roosters crowing, the horses neighing, you know. So this is like, Joe, Joe has no consideration for his neighbors. He was given a home office permit, and now he is running a business from his residence listening to constant noise. Now, when Joe first moved in in 2007, he was small. We didn't even pay any mind to it. I think he had a van and he had a trailer, you know. Everybody has a side gig, you know, but now we have seen him grow over the years. The point I was trying to make is that if you give Joe Sergi an inch, he takes a foot and does what he wants. You will also notice in this packet that he also has federal contracts. You don't get federal contracts with one employee. You don't buy $100,000 pieces of equipment for you and one other guy. And I do agree, residents should be able to do what they want on their property, but within reason. Running a full business is over the top, bringing our home values down, and possibly contaminating our town wells and water. I'm sure if any board member lived next to Joe Sergi, that you would be in our position. This last statement that I'm going to make, I mean, I mean no disrespect. I have been in health care for 36 years, and according to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, water and safety are basic human needs. And where Attorney Morton is a member of the Board of Health, I'm sure she knows that. Last page, you'll see it's from Where Ham Week from 2011. This is when the Board of Selectment made Sergi get his vehicles off the property, which he did. But then they all came back. At that point, we had Chief Stanley, Mr. Burke, and after they left, all the trucks came back. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
That is a thoughtful input.
Anyone else want to comment against this matter?
Anybody online?
All right, go ahead.
An unidentified Zoom user, you have to unmute your mic and identify yourself.
How you doing?
Hi.
Your name? John Pena. I live next to Joe. I live at 4 Sarabeth Lane.
Okay.
And I've been there 10 years. I mean, I see what's going on over there. I personally haven't had a problem with what he's doing. He does, he does keep his stuff in the back. I mean, once in a while, there may be some people or some friends over, but, I mean, as far as his business, he's kept it pretty tidy and kept it away from the rest. I mean, as far as us in the Sarabeth Lane, you know, we've abolished that association and the neighbors. I mean, the biggest problem we have is that Seven Hills. I mean, the backup, the backup alarms and buzzers in and out 24 hours a day, you know, that's, that's our biggest problem over there. I mean, Joe, if there's snow, he plows the road for us, he cleans the sidewalks, you know, he does a lot of stuff for us. I mean, it's, you know, again, I'm a direct right beside him neighbor, you know, and again, he has, he's only done all things for us, you know.
All right, thank you. Thank you. You could take your seat back. Counselor, what are you, these are direct abutters, what do you want to answer to that?
I think that the board could condition a variance that could meet somewhere in the middle. And, you know, as far as, I don't really want to rebut, you know, that's their opinion, and they can absolutely have it, but I think there's ways to, you know, protect both parties and their rights as homeowners. Regardless, if he doesn't have his business, he can still have his plow truck. So that's, you know...
How long that warehouse been built there? Why didn't rectify and get a permit for it?
We're working on it. If you have a metal building there, so, I don't know if we want to go into it. I'm trying, we're trying. We're trying to get a structural engineer to verify that everything is done. We have a plan that's stamped, but the commissioner wants a separate plan. So it's not like we've been sitting and just like, oh, we're unpermitted, we don't care. So I've been talking to Joe about, about that and trying to find an engineer or structural engineer who will certify it. So, and in that building, it's not just, it's like his kids' things. He also has tanning beds in there because he has the business over on Main Street, too. So it's not like all this landscaping stuff. It's his personal things and other business.
A lady in the back wants to speak. Want to come forward, please?
Thank you, Brenda Ekstrom. Just for clarification, isn't this a continuation on the appeal for that large building in the back? I didn't know, it wasn't for a variance, right?
Correct.
So this is just on the oversized building?
It's incorrect.
Right, it's on the appeal of the commissioner's decision, right?
That's all this is.
It is an appeal, that he is saying that we have a use, and in most recent, it's a general contract use. The whole idea about the building is a separate matter.
The building, you mean, the permit?
The permit, yes. That is not what we're hearing.
Now, that is, the way it started, there's a complaint, commissioner went there, correct me if I'm wrong, and put a cease and desist, or cite him a violation that he's running a business there, correct?
Correct.
Can you brief us?
We're here.
Let him brief us, huh?
Did you see that? Yeah.
I did post a, I didn't post, but I did give notice of a cease and desist on the So in my opinion, he's running a business in R130. Counselor says it doesn't look like a contractor's yard, but I've walked to the back property, not on Mr. Sergi's property, on the, I guess, the town employment's property in the rear. There's trailers, there's bobcats, there's box trailers that you tow, there's piles of loom, piles of sand, there's bricks, there's blocks. That's a general contractor's yard. There's bobcats, there's six-wheel dump trucks, not small F-150s. The building he built, it's a pretty big accessory building, 30 by 60, three overhead doors, roadway cut right through the town's property, not just a roadway cut, but trees cut, material mucked out, process brought in. So to me, he's just turned a residential property into a commercial property. And I understand the counselor's point about going around town and looking everywhere and seeing what goes on. I understand that. I could be busy for the rest of my life. So my department only responds to written filed complaints. That's the only way I can, so we don't have, I'm not doing... On certain sites or what? Whoever, if someone files a complaint, I respond. I do not drive around town saying, look at this, look at this, look at this. Again, I can't do that, and I'm understaffed to do that.
So I respond to this. Tonight, we're here, and I believe she's right, Ms. Ekstrom, either to uphold or overturn his decision. We cannot argue a variance, you have to apply for it.
We discussed that at the last hearing. If you watched the tape, you asked it to be re-advertised. I also checked off variance, so...
Did you re-advertise?
Yeah. The procedural idea is that, we understand, but...
All right, okay, I'm just, I mean, the last few hearings, we had 18 of them, so I can recollect all of them.
This was re-advertised because I didn't read it.
Ma'am, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just said that I've been watching for it, and I didn't, I haven't seen it re-advertised as a variance special permit.
Okay.
So I came back because I knew they said they were coming back today for this.
Okay.
So then when everyone started talking about whether they were going to let this go or let, you know, not, I was like, wait a minute, I thought we were here just for the appeal, and that's why I didn't come up until they started talking about that, because I thought it was just on the appeal of the building commissioner's decision.
All right, counsel, you said you apply for a variance?
On the initial application, but I always check off, if it's a cease and desist, I check off an appeal, because I have to appeal to cease and desist, and I check off variance. You know, if you want to get into the procedural thing, I remember at the last hearing, if you watched the tape, you asked Mr. Repose that it, make sure it goes for a variance. Everyone heard that who was here. So, I mean, we can go back and forth in regards to publicizing it or whether it was... But when you get a cease and desist, usually the commissioner will say you can rectify it by going to the ZBA to get a special permit. So that's why you check off both. So, I mean, I would prefer to actually spend the time on the matter and how can we fix it? Because if you deny this, there's still going to be stuff there.
Now, my problem is procedures, that the advertising doesn't call for a variance. Your application does, and we have to give the neighbors a chance.
So I'd be happy to have it more re-advertised, go with Mr. Akabachi's maybe suggestion to do something on that property and, you know, see if we can prove to you that even though I, you know, this, I do believe it's a neighborly dispute that, you know, this gentleman should be able to have his business.
I want to ask the board again, after we heard the testimony, I want to run, go back to the board and ask, see what they think. What do you think, Richard, of the, after you heard the couple, the neighbors there, the next door neighbors?
I am, I'm in here because I do think that they need to be respected, but at the same time, I also want to, I try to respect as much as I can, people being able to do what they want to do with their property. And if they are a neighbor and you go approach them and they work with you, well, then I think things get solved. But when I see when neighbors go to do something and approach them and they get the wrong treatment, we end up here. So something's definitely not working over there as far as neighborly functions and...
Troy, what do you...
I think it needs to be cleaned up.
Troy, what do you think?
Well, after hearing everything, I'm kind of leaning towards Rich and Jim's resolutions and what's going on. Maybe there is a compromise that can be made, but there has to be some action taken towards that, I think.
Veronica.
I think after hearing Mr. and Mrs. Nagel's comments, especially where he's been there since 2007, they started small, and I think at some point, you have to move your business. I think that they are 100% correct that they also have rights, not just the person that owns this property and is hoping to have a business in a residential area. They purchased their property knowing that they were going into a residential location, and they should have every right to expect that the town is going to uphold the bylaws that protect their property and where they moved to. Yes, a person does have a right to do what they want on their property, but within reason, and I think that they've gone beyond reason. Their business has grown, it needs to be elsewhere.
Jimmy.
I think the neighbors presented a very lucid argument. I would, I'd continue to be, I would, I continue to be willing to continue, but I need to be convinced to grant relief at this point. I think that, I think that Mr. Sergi needs to go above and beyond. He needs to go to the extreme where those neighbors that came in opposition are willing to come back here and say, we've made a resolution. If he can accomplish that, then we can act in good faith. If he can't, I think we have an obligation to this town, to the community.
I tend to agree with Veronica. I remember when Mr. Churchill lived on, on R130 zone over there 20 years ago, he wanted to run an office in his, in his basement. It was literally him and Mike, two of them, and he had a hell of a time with the zoning board to grant an engineering office with the owner and one person. For us to grant a variance for that magnitude business, I agree with Veronica personally. So you don't have four members. It seems to...
There appears there is a violation. The commissioner has sent this, a notice of violation. There is a violation.
But on the variance argument, I'm not, personally, I agree with Veronica. Yes, ma'am, I'll give you a chance. And so, I don't know where we're going to take it from here, what's the wishes, the board wishes. Ma'am, come forward. State your name again for the records.
Charlie Nagel at 309 Charge Pond Road. Well, first of all, I'm retired, okay? So I'm home all day. I take care of my, my 89-year-old mother, okay? So I am home, all right? And I think after 49 years of working and, and being a registered nurse, I'm tired, you know? Now, I really wish that Mr. Sergi and us could get along, but when he first moved in, you know, fireworks, firecrackers, you know, with his horses, with the horse manure, and I would go to the Board of Health, make complaints, but Donit, he always found out about it. And he would be in his backyard at night with his skid steer or whatever he used to clean it up. So of course, when the Board of Health would go down there, they wouldn't find anything, all right? We did that several times, and Donit, he always found out about it. So that was making us look like jerks, okay? So this has been like, I would say we started having trouble back in '08. My husband was diagnosed with, with cancer, okay, stage three. And when you blow off fireworks at 3:00 a.m. in the morning here, I'm still working, I work second shift, I would get home, I would finally get to bed at 3:00 o'clock in the morning, and a, and a firework goes off. And I'm not saying just fireworks. I don't know what the heck these were, but it blew me out of bed, okay? And this has been continued. I would love to be able to get along with, with, with him. I mean, when he had his farm, he was supposed to have horses, okay? Then he started with the chickens, which I don't mind, but he never kept them in the coop.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to, you know, Mr. Sergi's here and I can't, I think her point's made at this point as far as her opinion of his character. So, you know, unless it's new information, I would like to...
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I need to hear wishes from the board. If you want to close, you want to continue, what do you want to do?
My question is, what can happen during, is there anything that's going to, between now and two weeks from now, that's going to change the, the vote that we could take Are we better off just closing the public hearing and making a...
Let's throw a vote. Let's make it by the book.
And by vote, you mean on the violation, not on the variance?
Correct.
Yeah, with the uphold or overturn, and she's arguing the variance, so we're going to answer, vote for the variance.
I would say that giving us an additional two weeks will allow us to try to rectify and use some of those suggestions, hearing the feedback from the neighbors. You know, I haven't been involved in any sort of mediation with them. Possibly it would allow for some sort of mediation for us to come to an agreement to have him allowed to have his business with ramifications that the abutters would approve.
Are you requesting a continuance?
I am requesting a continuance till July 10th.
Well, if, if, yes.
I'd like to add, I think there needs to be some more effort in the... I'd like to add, I think there needs to be some more effort in the applicant's building permit application. No offense, that could be done within two to three days, not weeks, I don't know how many weeks it is now, it's gone past the point I should actually be rejecting it, because there's been no activity. So these buildings that he built, the company, they put 20, 30 stamps of all the different states. It's generic, they say 18 wide, 26 wide, 30 wide, 12 high, blah, blah, blah. I asked for a plan for what was built, months ago, last year actually, when he applied the first time. And that's simple, that's easy to do. It costs money, but it's very easy to do. Draw the plan, figure what size steel they use, what size bean, snow load, wind load, et cetera, et cetera. How was the foundation built? That's what I asked, to legalize that building. I think it's a big ask for the applicant to get this, a use variance, or to allow this commercial activity in the R-130 with a 30-by-60 building unpermitted, that he doesn't respond to me. So I wanted to make that, get that out there. So, asking the applicant to show good faith, I think he hasn't shown an effort at all.
All right, I guess we have two choices, make a motion to close, we pull a vote, or a motion to continue. It's up to board, if it gets seconded and we vote, it goes, it's closed. If somebody make a motion to close, to continue, get seconded, get seconded and voted, we'll continue, so it's a new lap.
I'll move to continue.
I second.
I have a second.
I second.
Okay, with Richard. In favor, who is in favor, say aye. Richard?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Deny.
Jimmy?
Aye.
I deny, but it needs simple majority, it carries.
Hopefully, Mr. Sergi heard the need, rectify this matter before July 10.
That's solely Jim's opinion, though, keep in mind, yeah, right, but that's solely Jim's opinion, keep in mind. So if he go build 50 million trees, doesn't mean, can I convince them, everybody has his own opinion, okay?
Five, no, it was three?
Two, zero.
Two, zero. Nazee and Veronica.
There's no, yeah, continue to, 710.
Anything down there to go back in the folder?
All right, we continue 13-24 Diamond Investor LLC, 2785 Cranberry Highway. What's the date today?
Today's gonna be 26.
All right. On that matter, we have, I hope he has an extension for us, Attorney Titlebaum, because we have the same issue, it'll expire on July 6.
Yeah, there was one sent in.
What is it, let's read it.
I don't know if it's in the folder here, I saw it by email.
One second.
Which one is this?
1524. I don't even have the folder.
That's how much it was continued.
All right, let me see, I know Sonia sent it to me.
Yeah, there's something attached to the...
All right, somebody has that, can somebody read it?
It's attached to the...
Somewhere on the revise, 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 revise leg.
Sorry, I was...
Okay, go ahead.
I'll find it.
So on that matter, which is Diamond Investor LLC, we have a letter, be read with our clerk.
Yeah, it says, "Dear Land Use Coordinator Farady and Principal Department Assistant Reposo, my client continues to wait to receive the updated plans. Accordingly, we again request a continuance until the next available ZBA meeting. We appreciate the board's understanding in this matter. Signed by Peter W. Titlebaum."
Okay, does he give us an extension? Deadline is 76, and the next hearing, 710.
He does not.
Oh, we got a problem.
Well, I think we have to remediate it the same way we did the last one, we don't grant the extension and we allow him to reapply.
All right, what was the notice, is it, it's on a violation, or for a special permit, or site plan review, what is it?
Cease and desist.
What's that?
Cease and desist.
It's a cease and desist.
So whether we uphold or overturn your decision?
Right.
All right, can, do you have that file, Jim, can we just make sure on that?
I don't have the file.
I'll pick it up here.
It's all right, I think we should uphold the commissioner's decision.
Well, let's make sure that's what the notice, right? All right, well, I'm looking, board question, Troy?
None.
None? Veronica?
I'll look it up right now.
Do you have any question?
I don't recall.
Okay, Jimmy?
I have no questions, I did review this earlier today, I understand what it is.
Chris, do you have a question?
No questions, he's what, applying for a, he wants a...
Well, he's violating, and he had a cease and desist, he appealed, and we hear either we overturned the commissioner, or upheld his decision.
He's got a tow truck on, he lives on Cranberry Highway, it's zone strip commercial, okay? It's allowed use with a special permit, there's been no special permit granted.
And site plan review, and there's a foundation wide open in that law.
So he's therefore, he's, he's up, he's in violation, the commissioner has notified him, and he's appealed that notice, and it's gone to the point now where his application has been in front of us so long, that we have to make a decision before he's, before the time he's asked for an extension, so...
I don't even remember talking about that.
It's been a long time.
No, it never came before us, it was applied and continued, 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 for three months.
If we blatantly, if we just unwittingly continue tonight, then he gets, the building commissioner gets overturned by construction, by...
Constructive, yeah.
Constructive, you know, so we can't, we can't be lulled into that. So I think our only option, personally, I think our only option is to deny, we can't, we deny the request for an extension?
And uphold the commission decision.
We make, and we uphold the commissioner's decision, and we close this matter.
Anyone in the public want to speak in favor or against this matter? Nobody? All right, board wishes, I want a motion, what do you guys want to do?
So my first motion would be to close the public portion of this hearing.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Nazee.
My second motion would be to deny the request for a continuance.
And what else with the motion?
Huh?
Yeah.
That's a motion all by itself.
Okay, and we have to make a motion on the commissioner?
Yeah, that's gonna be my next motion.
Second that one.
Second, second, and, okay, Sonia, you gotta write this properly.
I'm doing it in three motions, so that we're voting on all three.
Does she have a condition sheets? Well, I guess we have to go to office, like I did today. All right, the first motion, please listen carefully, Sonia and Patty, Patty's here. First motion by Jim on 13-24 Diamond Investors LLC, 2785 slash 2785 R Cranberry Highway. After the public hearing has been closed, the first motion by Mr. Akabachi is to deny the extension.
Deny the request for extension.
Okay, do I have a second on that matter?
Second.
Second by Ms. Devenese, all in favor, say aye on this matter. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so no continuance, it's denied. Second.
I move that we deny, oh, I move that we uphold the building commissioner's notice of violation.
And deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal. Uphold the...
Right. Okay, on, we have a motion by Mr. Akabachi on 13-24 Diamond Investors LLC, 2785, 27R Cranberry Highway, to uphold the commissioner's decision to for cease and desist. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Veronica Devenese, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. So it's upheld, and it's closed, and extension denied. Now...
That's it, they're done, they gotta reapply and start all over again if they want to. In the meantime, the commissioner can go down and say...
So, okay, what they could do, apply for a site plan review now, because we didn't deny with prejudice or without, so they could apply, all right?
It's actually, for the record, I think it's automatically with prejudice unless we say without prejudice.
Right.
So therefore, I'd like to amend that it is without prejudice.
So he's allowed to apply for a site plan review.
I don't want to make him have to wait two years.
Right. So let's amend the first thing, the first one, he's denying, he's denying the extension without prejudice.
That we did right.
Right, so we go back to the first motion, that Jim denied the request for extension without prejudice on 13-24 Diamond Investor LLC, special permit slash variance, 2785, 27I, 2785 R Cranberry Highway. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye, so this carries without prejudice. The reason I had to go through these things, because there's attorneys involved, so...
All right, we go... C's and dot the i's. Five Star Golf is also asked to continue?
22-24, Five Star Golf. All right, Five Star Golf.
There's also a letter from...
All right, while we have this, while we have Phil here, Phil, you want to come forward, brief us on this matter? We will, I don't have a problem continuing, but we want to see where we are.
We're gonna talk about it?
Yeah.
Or we're gonna continue it?
I want to talk about it.
We're gonna talk.
We have the right to, even if they're not here, and then we'll continue. We're not gonna make a decision to give them benefit of the doubt, but we want to see where we are, at least where we're going. All right, public hearing is still open, Mr. Cordero, one of the fellows on your review?
Of course, for the record, Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Major Associates, we did review the site plan application for Five Star Golf, they're obviously looking to repurpose the existing building on Marion Road. They did provide a set of site plan documents which indicated a general layout of the facility, some general landscaping, general circulation for emergency apparatus which was required by the fire captain, but as we're running into, these plans lack additional detail to really reinforce what's out there on the property today, how it's been maintained, how it's going to be maintained, how the infrastructure is functioning. The pavement on this site is in very poor condition, it is located directly adjacent to wetland resource areas, there's no indications that they're managing any of the stormwater runoffs that could potentially be adverse to the wetland area. There are conflicts throughout the site relative to parking, they provided no information on architectural detailing for the building, enhancements, signage, canopy, awnings, anything of that like, signage. There was a question that was raised by an abutter during the introduction of the hearing about how access is maintained, because they share a common parking lot along the property line. The site plans don't discuss that, they provide no narrative, so there's going to ultimately be a disagreement between the owner of Marion Road here and the abutter, in terms of how access is provided, and we're recommending that they elaborate on that. There's a number of monitoring walls on site, there's no testing provided on those, we don't know the current status of those, I think the board should be informed of that. And then there's very little landscaping on site, they provided some enhancements at the beginning of the site, right along Marion Road, but internal to the site, there's hardly anything. So there's a laundry list of things that we think they can improve upon, or at least clarify, or provide reasoning to the board as to why they're electing not to do certain elements on this one.
All right, we're not gonna deliberate that, because they're not here to answer questions, but here you heard Mr. Phil Cordero see where we at, we're not gonna ask him a question, but you're very welcome to read the letters online, but there is his comment. So on the motion to continue, what's the wishes?
I think it's appropriate, I make a motion to continue, this is for Five Star Golf Cars, and they have asked for the second meeting in July, which would be July 24th.
And what's their, what deadline, Five Star Golf? When did they apply?
May 22, and it says 60 days from close of the public hearing.
No, May 20, 90 days from May 22nd.
90 days, okay.
So we've still got some time.
Ah, we do have time, yeah.
We've still got some time to get a...
Yeah, we have time.
Continuance on the time to make a...
And what they want, May...
On July 24th.
May, June, okay, so July 24, okay, so I have a motion by Jim to continue, 22-24 Five Star Golf to July 24, 2024, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye, and I hope they review the tapes and contact Mr. Cordero and work things out. Thank you, Phil. All right.
And then the next one, 26-24, Richard and Audrey Creeden.
Okay, 26-24, 24 Cove Street.
That's an appeal, they've got a request in here via Attorney Conry to continue.
Withdraw or continue?
I believe it's a continue.
Continue?
Continue.
All right, when's that expires?
It's an appeal, so there isn't one, right?
There's a possible, it says here in the letter from Attorney Conry, there's a possible resolution to the issues involving the referenced case, which is now scheduled for a hearing before our board this evening.
Last time, that was the first hearing, right? So they got plenty of time.
Yeah.
All right, what's the, when do they want to continue to?
There's a June 7... I don't know, he was, he gave us a nice long...
Let's continue to the 10, because 24 is a busy night.
Yeah.
Okay, can we get a motion to continue, 26-24 Creeden, 24 Cove Street till July 10?
So moved.
So moved by Rich, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Jim, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so that's continued, and it is 26-24 Creeden. 24 Cove Street. I'm sorry, I didn't ask anyone on the public for or against this matter, or online? Okay, there's nobody. Anybody there? All right, we're gonna move to the public hearing, 27-24 TRT Wareham LLC, 2991 Cranberry Highway.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 26, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 27-24. to consider petition number 27-24 for a variance from the requirements of Article 11, Section 1128, Section 1167, and Section 1172 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to TRT Wareham LLC, care of Key Point Partners LLC of 174 Colony Place, Plymouth, Mass., proposing to refurbish the existing pylon sign located at 2991 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. This appears on assessors map 15, Lot C in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
I'd like to make a comment if I could, Mr. Chairman. Apparently, there is, says that, I got a text at 7:07 that says, Wareham TV went blank and shut down the ongoing meeting. It's live? Okay, so you saw that at 7:07?
Is that AI? AI acting up again?
That was Neil that told me.
Public hearing's still open.
Maybe his neck of the woods went down.
Still legit for us. All right, ma'am, name and address for the record?
Allyn Fiscotti. 74 Colony Place in Plymouth, Mass.
All right, wanna explain to us what you're doing?
Sure, we, so this site, 2991, is the...
Stop and shop plaza.
Yeah, it's where the stop and shop is, on Cranberry Highway. So we have an existing pylon sign that was installed mid-1990s. What we'd like to do is maintain and repair the existing pylon. We're not, none of the structure is moving. What we would like to do is put...
Give it a nice facelift.
Yeah, give it a nice facelift. Would like to paint. Would like to change the top of the sign, a triangle, to a square. We had recently, over the last few years, repainted the sign into dusty blue. So we'd like to now repaint the sign. Column wraps on the sign. The existing height of the sign from the ground today is 336 feet.
It's inches.
336 feet?
Inches, inches.
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 200 more feet and you'll be above that.
Inches, yes. The highest sign ever. And this new one will be 335 and a half inches. So we're trying to keep the integrity, the existing integrity in place.
Okay, as you all know, our bylaw for the signs, even if you put a paintbrush, it requires a variance. So no matter what you do to a sign, you need a variance. And now that you heard that, I personally like it. It's a nice facelift to it. And especially with the new highway, I don't have a problem with it. Troy?
I have no problem with it.
Veronica?
No problem.
Jimmy?
Looks great.
Richard?
Yeah, I guess that, I guess the stone bottom wouldn't impede anybody in that turnaround, because I don't think that's gonna be a problem. Not, no, I'm good with it.
Chris?
Looks good.
Anyone on the public want to speak against or favor this matter? Anyone on the room? I hear none. Would you like to add anything, ma'am? Okay, that being said, can I get a motion to close?
We'll move.
Second.
Second by Rich, motion by Jim to close. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. Now, the wishes on the variance.
I'm going to motion to approve it as presented.
All right, we have, we have a motion to grant the variance that meets the statute requirement for MGL 4A, Section 10. Make sure you enter this, Sonia or Patty, on the minutes. On the drawing dated 9/5/2023, and for Key Point Partner. And who was, who was the, these are Metro Signs? So drawing for Met, for Key Point Partner, designed by Metro Sign and dated 9/5/2023. So you're gonna build exactly by these plans, okay? So on that motion by Veronica, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. It carries, thank you.
Thank you, board.
You're very welcome.
Wasn't it worth sitting through everybody else's business?
Are you with the lady? You guys all together? Anyone here for something else? Just while you're here, Phil, I hope all these site plan reviews, all site plan construction people have been calling you for inspection.
We agree, sir, for the number of open, we're getting better traction.
All right, good idea. There was something sent for Target. Is that for tonight?
It said it was supposed to be in front of us, but I think that was gonna be in front of us, not this week, though.
All right.
Because they're not here, and it's not on.
Well, if they listening...
That's not bad.
I, I'd like, you know, when it comes in, we'll talk about it. All right, anything else to add before we close adjourned?
I just have a quick question.
Go ahead.
I'm going over last, last meeting in that, on the 1924 for RJ Motto. I have down for the special permit of 401, was that?
Yes.
That was on the, I didn't see that in the...
You abstained on that.
Yeah, I know, but then there was a variance we passed for 500, correct?
That's true. You did 500, and it was, it was stamped today. I went and wrote a bunch of decisions and...
Nope, no, just clarifying, I'm pretty, I mean, there was more. I abstained, we were talking only two times.
Let me...
I mean, one time, but there was two times.
To be honest with you, I had to go to the town because Sonia was away, and I had to go write like eight decisions today. I gathered as much as I can. But I know I rewrote this decision.
I saw the other one.
Let me see what she wrote.
Just wanna just make sure that that goes.